I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. I would like to invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're missing a stripe on that flag.
Bob, could you remove the flag? Thank you. I just have one little comment at the beginning here. Last week, New Mexico lost one of its finest. State Police Officer Darren Girard was shot and killed in the line of duty while conducting a traffic stop this past Thursday, February the 4th. He was assisting the U.S. Homeland Security Investigations. Officer Girard grew up in Lausbourg, New Mexico, and was a graduate of Lausbourg High School. He is survived by his wife, two sons, and other family members. I would like to have a moment of silence in remembrance of this brave man. Thank you. Ms. Mackey, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Ladner.
President.
Counselor Beddison.
Counselor Beddison, present.
Counselor Ammon Smith.
Counselor Ammon Smith, present.
Counselor Ray.
President.
Counselor Kano.
Counselor Kano, present.
Alex Brown.
Present.
Chief Freddie Portillo.
Present.
Bart Roselli.
Present.
Robert Higgins.
Present.
And myself and Mackey.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. And thank you, Mr. Higgins, for setting this up for us tonight. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Next on the agenda is proclamations. And we have one proclamation tonight, which is the day to honor the Territorial Charter of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. This was a proclamation that was that was passed by the town council. Whereas on February 15, 1878, the Speaker of the Territorial House of Representatives of the state of New Mexico, Juan B. Patron, presided over passage of an act to incorporate the town of Silver City and the county of Grant, which was signed that day by the governor. And whereas this act of incorporating constitutes the official recognition by the territory of New Mexico that certain rights and powers of self-government shall be granted in perpetuity to the citizens of the town of Silver City. And whereas for 143 years, this territorial charter has provided a model of local self-government in the state of New Mexico to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of its inhabitants. And whereas pursuant to resolution 2016-02, the town council of the town of Silver City deemed it appropriate that the town and its inhabitants shall annually honor the passage of its territorial charter and remember those persons responsible therefore. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim February 13, 2021, as Territorial Charter Day and that the inhabitants of the town are encouraged to honor said day with a recollection of the town's history and such celebration as might be deemed appropriate. We'll be hearing a little bit more from Mr. Roselli about our territorial charter celebration. Next on the agenda is council comments. First tonight is Counsel Ammon Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening I do not have any comments.
Thank you. Counselor Kano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one, and it's actually more of a question probably for Mr. Brown and for Mr. Reynolds. They might want to talk about it and then maybe get back to us. I've gotten a lot of complaints this past week. People are concerned because I know that we can't have, that we can't do anything about campaign signs being up all year long. That's something that's already been dealt with. But there's at least one house that has a sign that has an expletive on it. And it is directed at a certain political official. And the residents in that neighborhood are a little concerned about the fact that, you know, there's an expletive on it. There's kids in the neighborhood. The kids are wondering what it means. You know, it's a bad situation. So I don't know if there's anything we can do to make sure that that person has to keep their sign. But if there is, if we could get some direction on how to go about that, who needs to be involved in that conversation? Because, you know, it's not good for that neighborhood to have that sign up. And it's not necessary either.
I agree 100% Counsel Kano. And I got an email from one of the residents on Sunday, and I turned it over to community development that day. So they're working on it with code enforcement and and I'll speak with Jim. He's not here today because he had a medical procedure. But I'll talk to him more about it when he's back to work.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments. The first one is I want to explain to you and to the public why I voted no on the last week for the homeless people. I know that we're supposed to do something for them or try to do something for them. But let's put the shoe on the other foot and say, how come they can't help us? And I don't agree in certain locations. There are a lot of locations here in Silver City that can be done. I thought it was very wrong to put it in that district there with those people there. Some people like it, some people don't like it. These people have an easy way of doing nothing. And that's the easiest thing in the world to do is nothing. I've had a couple of people coming on that situation there. And I said, well, you guys should have been on the minute because I would have asked questions. But I don't know if it's a said and done deal or not. I don't believe that those people should be there. Let them go somewhere else and let them be self-supported on themselves, not us to support them. It's costing everybody money, a lot of people money. And this is ridiculous for us to be supporting homeless people like that. The best thing to do is not to help them at all. Maybe they'll get rid of it. Maybe they'll do something else worthwhile. Also, I saw a video today from the state police person that's in charge of the union. And his video was very touching, very, very touching. He mentioned the guy, the officer that got killed. He also mentioned the bill that's been introduced. And it's Senate Bill, HP Bill. Senate Bill, I think it's Senate Bill 227. And this is something that should be looked out by the governor, the lieutenant governor, and other people upstate. This bill here is aimed at the police department to tie their hands when they're doing something. The name of the person that's doing the bill is Lopez. An ego. And these people have no concern for the police department. Are these the same people that we voted for? This Democratic Party, not all, not all, don't get me wrong. There are a lot of bad people and a lot of good people. But this Democratic people are trying to do things to the United States and to our state here by tying the police department's hands and taking away their rights. What are they supposed to be doing? Knocking on people's door and then sending them a letter and having an invite to your house to give you issue, an issue to warn from the rest? This is wrong, very, very wrong. And these are the people that are in our country, are leading our state. Hoping that we can get a hold of our people upstate and say, this is wrong. These are the same people that are trying to defund the police department. I was I was upset with some of the comments that were made up from the higher-ups. I felt sorry for his people. I felt sorry for the family and all that. They're the same ones that are trying to defund the police department. And that's wrong. You think both sides defend, oh, we're doing that. We're here to protect the people. We're all just together. Let's work together. Put our differences aside. Too much hatred, way too much hatred. And pick us down to small communities like ours. Also, I am for legalizing medical marijuana. And I hope the state takes into consideration and passes it. God gave us herbs to help us. These drug companies, the pharmacists, they're all making money, a lot of money. And every bleeping pill that you take, it has side effects. Take one for this, that's a, you take another pill for this one, it's got a side effect. This is a business of killing people. That's wrong. And also when Mr. Portillo comes up to his report, I will ask him some questions. I better stop now from my head. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Counselor Beddison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment. I just would like to remind the public that if if you have a barking dog in your neighborhood, if you have someone that's aggressively panhandling or what's, you know, begging, or if you see someone not wearing a mask or a business that's not wearing a mask, please call the Silver City Police Department. You can call the non-emergency hotline and which is at the Silver City, Grant County Dispatch. And I'll ask the chief to, because all of a sudden I forgot the number as I'm speaking. But you can call and you can tell them that there's a code enforcement, a code violation. Please don't email or call me or call another council member. We're not the ones that are witnessing it. We're not necessarily where you are. And it's up to, like with most laws, a citizen to report it. Because our officers are not around to see this sort of thing. And I'm not, I'm not there with you. So I just wanted to remind folks to please, please do your civil duty to report something and to report it to code enforcement through central dispatch or call, you know, Silver City PD and let them know. But you'll have to make a report about a code violation. And I just also wanted to remind folks that it's a First Amendment right for anyone to ask you for something, to ask you for money, to ask you, you know, to have those sorts of free speech. But it's not their right to refuse to accept the word no and to continue to come at you in a threatening or aggressive manner. We do have an ordinance for that. But it has to walk the fine line and you do need to report it personally to the Silver City PD or to, or also through code enforcement or through Grant County Dispatch. And I believe, and Chief, would you correct me if I'm wrong? The non-emergency number is 388-8840?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor, that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beddison. Are there any other counsel comments? Thank you. Then we'll move right along to Agenda Item Number Six, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on January 26, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Ammon Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of January 26, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ray.
Thank you, sir. I second that as well.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey.
Counselor Beddison.
Counselor Beddison, aye.
Counselor Ammon Smith.
Counselor Ammon Smith, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Kano.
Counselor Kano, aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is Number Seven, which is public input. Ms. Mackey, did we get any public input by email, phone, or text?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay, thank you. Next is reports. We have several reports tonight. The first report is on the Territorial Charter Day activities, which will be given by Mr. Roselli, Museum Director. Mr. Roselli, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this year we're going to miss the ball and we're going to miss playing baseball. It was a fun time last year. And next year we'll be back with another huge public presentation, celebration, I'm sure. But this year, the mayor called together a small group of us to plan some activities. And I'm here to report that we have some pretty exciting things going on. The keystone of this will be a scavenger hunt with about 20 questions about Silver City history and culture that will be posted and people can participate. And again, thanks to the mayor and others. We have more than $200 in prizes to award the winners of the scavenger hunt. So it'll be a lot of fun and worth people's while to participate. You can find out all the information on how to participate on the Territorial Charter Day Facebook page. Or you can go to the town Facebook page and the museum's Facebook, museum's website, town website to find out more. You may have been hearing this week already, some really interesting radio spots with the mayor reading about Silver City history and Charter Day celebrations. In addition to the scavenger hunt, Main Street, Silver City Main Street is offering a fun run. Run from home and have a good time and submit a picture of yourself running in Victorian gear, if you like, Victorian costume. So again, a lot of fun. This year, Mr. Swatzel and Mr. Garni, who are history teachers at La Plata Middle School, are having their kids focus on History Day and producing short videos, not History Day, I'm sorry, Territorial Charter Day, their impressions of Silver City's past. So stay tuned. You can watch those on the Facebook page. They'll be posted. And I'm sure I'm missing something. The scavenger hunt, the fun run, and the kids' videos. So we invite everybody to participate. Check out the Facebook page. There's also videos and photos from last year and previous year's celebrations that'll be posted on that Facebook page. So it's virtual, but it should be fun. And again, celebrating this community's heritage and specialness.
Any questions or comments for Bart? Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Ray, I got some information for you.
Okay. Oh, a chihuahua?
About the
Pardon me?
Okay. So I will get in contact with you tomorrow. I will get in contact with you tomorrow. And also, you're doing a very good job at the museum. And I look forward for a territorial charity. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Roselli, you also have a report on all the wonderful public programs that you're having during this pandemic.
Yeah. I want to thank the town manager for the support and encouragement he's given us. Because without that support, I don't think we could have gotten through this. So we realized, even though being down a position, we needed to do something for this community. We wanted to do something for this community. So we pivoted, like many other organizations, and presented our programs virtually. A little different for us. We had a steep learning curve, learning about the technology and testing our programs to see whether people would sign on and watch through the TV screen. I'm happy to report that our programs, it's a little counterintuitive, but we've been able to reach more people through Zoom and other methods than we could fit in the SILCO. You may remember, we used to have all of our programs in museum annex. And it got pretty crowded, so we moved to the SILCO Theater. And several times we packed the theater with programs about Silver City history. Shows there's a real interest. Well, when we pivoted to virtual, we reached more than 3,000 people over the past few months. And for those of you following statistics, that's a 220% increase in the number of people who came to the museum's programs to learn about Silver City history. We launched a Silver City Museum YouTube channel. So all of our programs are recorded and then placed on YouTube. Our Facebook followers have gone from 700 to more than 2,000 in 2020, 2021. So people want to learn and appreciate what's, you know, the history and culture of Silver City. And going to virtual events has really paid off for us. We'll probably, you know, once we do open, we'll probably record our programs and place them on YouTube so that people all over the world can learn about Silver City history. We also were very active in our collections area. And we cataloged more than 6,000 of our 50,000 objects and photographs in the collection. So now there's an additional 6,000 objects that you can search and learn about Silver City history. And the last thing is we created a virtual online gift store. So in the comfort of your home, you could go onto the museum's website and do shopping at the museum's gift store. And we've had, let me see, more than 2,000 customers have visited our online gift store, which was launched right before Christmas and Thanksgiving. So we're still, you know, we're missing people. We love the personal interaction of people coming to the museum, but we're still providing a lot of service through Zoom and other places.
Mayor and council, I just want to say how proud I am the staff at the museum for taking this challenge under these, the challenging times that we're facing right now. And they're really making something out of it. And I think this is going to be a huge benefit when we can actually open up as well. So I just want to say, great job.
Thank you.
Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Roselli, go ahead.
That's okay. One other aspect that our staff learned to do and launch were what we call virtual exhibits. So you can't come to the museum and see the exhibit, but basically it's a big website. And we launched our first one right at the end of the year, Arte Chicano 2020. You may know that every year there's a group of local artists of Hispanic culture background who present their artwork at the museum. And this is the fifth year we've done it. And Chris Alvarez, who was born here in Silver City and has a studio in Colorado Springs, and Buck Burns, local character, exhibited their works. So you can go online right now. And the exhibit is not just like, you know, you walk into an exhibit and see things hanging on the wall. But we recorded Buck and Chris talking about their art. So it's a very interesting and unique way of approaching. I just want to make one last comment because we've got some things in the works for next year. We're working on launching our second virtual exhibit called Voices from the Range. It's about the ranching exhibit, the ranching community here in Silver City and Grant County. And that should be launched in another month or so. We're also, again, thanks to Alex for his support, we're launching a Chihuahua Hill History Project. Chihuahua Hill is probably the first settled neighborhood even before there was a Silver City. And it's still a very important neighborhood. Very important in understanding the diversity of the culture here in Silver City. So we're going to be researching the history of Chihuahua Hill, but also going to as many residents of Chihuahua Hill and people who used to live in Chihuahua Hill and record their stories, record their oral histories. And that'll be a permanent record at the Silver City Museum. There'll be a Chihuahua Hill History Collection. And hopefully in the future, we can do exhibits and programs and all sorts of ways of learning about and appreciating this very important neighborhood. There's more, but I know I better limit this to a few minutes. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Ammon Smith.
I just want to say thank you so much, Bart Roselli. And I really am tickled with the realization that doing virtual presentations means that I will never get turned away from this SILCO again because it's cool. So thank you so much.
Oh, glad to be here. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a discussion about a speed bump policy by Chief Portillo.
Mayor and Council, thank you. I want to go over some information, what we look into on how we decide to place a speed bump, also in coordination with Public Works and Mr. Brown. What I like to do is gather data from citizens, whether residential areas, other areas within the town. Emails come in. We look at the type of complaints that come in, how many complaints are coming in that area. During that time, what we've done in the past is we get a traffic counter. Community development, throw a traffic counter out there, see how many vehicles are actually coming through. I don't have the capability to check speeds on the counter, but I can check number of vehicles. Look at the total amount there. I can have officers stage at intersections. We've done that in the past to look at traffic flow, get observations from other officers, get input from other officers, whether it be administration or what their observations are. Take that into account and get recommendations. Use discretion. We use discretion a lot if it's necessary to place a speed bump at that particular area. So for example, recently, I authorized one for on 12th Street near the university, just west of Kentucky. That particular area, we're getting a lot of complaints of speeders, and particularly coming down from the dorms towards the university. Residential areas also, citizens were complaining of the speeders. Also, worked with Western New Mexico University Police. They were also getting complaints. We have done traffic enforcement there in the past. Been getting complaints for quite some time now. Worked with Mr. Penya, Public Works, authorized that one, and that one is actually going to be put in place. We also got to consider the type of road it is. Reaching out to Mr. Penya, again, we're looking at College Avenue. We've been getting complaints on College Avenue. What we can do there, an idea was brought up to place speed bumps there. We cannot place speed bumps on College Avenue, being that it is a designated collector's street. So that street there, did the research, we're going to have to look at maybe some more traffic calming devices on that particular area, which I did reach out to Mr. Penya again, and we'll have to have a sit-down and see what else we can do on that road. So that's another thing we have to take into account if this designated as a collector's street. Looking at the grade of the roadway. If we place a speed bump in that particular area, are we creating a hazard? Especially when we do have inclement weather, especially snow, especially on downgrades. We got to look at all that. And, you know, we also, what we have to look in there too is, does it hinder emergency vehicle access? Those are a lot of factors we got to take into account. I like to look at all that, and I'm real hesitant on just throwing speed bumps in certain areas. I'd like to get some data. I do tell the public, whenever I do have a call-in, people will call in and that this happened in the past. I tell them, can you please put it on paper? Can you give me your observations on paper? Can you forward me some documentation? Like to have documentation. And I'm always telling the public, please forward that to me. I will personally go up to the intersection, look at it. Again, those other measurements that I've used in the past, what I'm familiar with, we look at that. Another example of an area we cannot place any type of speed bumps is on 32nd Street, excuse me, leading up to Ursa Minor, Ursa Major area. It's dirt. There's just no, I mean, there was questions of can we put any type of dirt bumps, temporary ones? But they're just going to wash out. That's just not feasible. That's just not something that we're going to do. I explained to that citizen that we just can't do in that area. And I know we've had complaints in that area, particular area as well. So we'll run into that, just like on College Avenue, there's, we just need to do some research and look at a different approach. So that is basically, oh, of course pedestrian traffic too. That's another thing. That's another contributing factor, another piece of data. Of course, whenever the school's in session in Western, I also took that into account because you have college students walking. And that was another reason why I authorized that one to place it there. That's really all that I look at. And of course, there's cost involved, but I know I don't really have all the details on the cost on that. And I've been talking with Mr. Brown. Maybe Mr. Brown can help me and talk about the cost.
Yeah, well, let's talk about that speed table that we, because there's different types of speed bumps, speed humps, speed tables. Speed bump is like that, those tiny little things that you hardly feel half the time when you're driving over them. A speed hump is those really, you can actually almost ramp off of them if you're going fast enough. And then a speed table, which is much wider, flat on top. Those are the safer type of traffic calming device of the three. But at the same time, we also have to look at cost. A lot of times in the past, especially when we have neighborhoods where we have a bunch of people complaining. I've been in situations where half the neighborhood wants them, half the neighborhood doesn't want them. And so we've actually done traffic studies. The traffic studies can cost between $3,000 to $5,000. A speed table, I'm going to use the specific cost for the speed table that the chief authorized up on on 12th and up there, $6,000. So if we had done the traffic study and then paid for the speed table, I mean, we're talking $8,000 to $11,000 just for one speed table. So that can get very expensive and such. So, you know, what I've learned is, you know, we've done traffic studies before with engineers, but in all reality, you don't get better engineers than the police department because they see how everything goes on specifically, and every street's different. So, yeah, it can get very expensive. It can create liability. You know, traffic, Ursa Major Minor, the dirt streets up there. I mean, if we start doing any digging up on the street, you know, if we ever get any more weather, you're going to have gullies let it out and all that type of stuff up there. It just creates a much more dangerous street. So, you know, we rely very heavily on the chief and the police department and those determinations. Also, we do like to get buy-in of the neighborhoods as well. You know, because, you know, everybody, every neighborhood's got, has got people that like them, some don't like them. And, you know, we just need, we don't want to create problems with the neighbors either. Not just speed bumps, speed humps, but problems between the neighbors as well. So those are a lot of things that we think about when we're looking at putting speed bumps, speed humps. Well, I shouldn't say speed bumps because we don't do those at all. We just do the speed humps or speed tables. So.
Chief Portillo?
Yes?
I just had a question. Back about a year ago, Counselor Bettison did her Counselor Community Project, which was painting an optical illusion on a flat road. And after that was done, I went there and I watched it a couple of days off and on. When people came to that, that optical illusion, a lot of them slowed down. Is that something you've ever looked at?
I remember that project. I was actually there for that one. And I know in the beginning, it was very effective. As of lately, I don't have any information to say that it's still, that it's not, and it's not still working. I haven't got any information from any citizens to say that it's not doing any good. But that's the one that I've been part of.
Excuse me. I think the paint is mostly gone. Counselor Bettison?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that the paint, where it wore off fairly quickly. And I think that that's part of the discussion we've had over the years is, you know, most paint is tested back east. It doesn't really work well with the sort of surfacing that we have on our streets. And it doesn't work well with the hot sun and the, you know, it's just, it seems to fade very, very quickly. It's kind of like signage can do the same thing very quickly around here, despite folks saying, oh, no, it'll last five years, and it's gone in like two or three. So this, it did go fairly quickly. And I know that I had mentioned it to James Marshall, that people were saying that, you know, it just went very quickly. So I think it's something to think about, but there's also quite a bit of cost in repainting that over and over and over again. It's like our crosswalks in town, Mayor.
Right.
Yeah. You know, we've also looked at that plastic material that they use on crosswalks and such. But, you know, and they do have colored, different colors so that we could do a design such as that crosswalk that you're talking about. The problem is, is that that material is very slippery during wet weather. And it in itself will create traffic safety problems as well. So we've got to be very cognizant of that too. And you're right, as far as the paint, you know, around here, it doesn't last longer than a year. There's no way that it lasts. I don't think I've seen anything last longer than a year, especially when it's, when we're talking about paint. So we can continue to do some more research and see if there's other options. In fact, Chief, maybe if we can talk to Sir Reese from the Council of Governments, the traffic person, and see if the DOT has any options that we might want to look at.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Bettison?
So Alex and Chief Portillo, also in part of this is whether or not, who's the owner of the road or a portion of the roads? So I know that some of the roads, you know, along Ursa Minor and 32nd and things like that, and like goes over the hill up there, that's, some of that's privately owned, and the town cannot
Right.
cannot do any improvements on the road that benefit a non, you know, anyone other than the town because it's public money. Is that not correct?
That is correct. One more thing if I can point out, because you just brought it to my attention, I just remembered. The question was raised to me whether an individual could spend the money, and even though it's on a dirt road, place it on the dirt road. You cannot do that. You cannot just buy a speed bump, because I know they make them for dirt roads, and you can, there's some stakes you could put on there. It is illegal if you purchase any type of speed bump and put it on a roadway or try to alter the roadway in any way. Cannot do that.
Yeah, we have a lot of situations like that, for instance, up there. You're right, half of that road is private. Ursa Major is a town-owned street. Ursa Minor is a private street. I mean, if you look at Mountain View, about 90% of that road is actually private property. So, you know, we run into that a lot.
Any other questions or comments from Counselor Lehman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I really want to thank you, Chief Portillo and Mr. Brown, for giving a public explanation about, you know, some of the potential fixes for traffic calming on roads. I think what happens with the public, and boy, I do this too. Someone comes screaming down my street, I get annoyed, and I leap to what I'd like someone else to do about it. And, you know, putting on even the traffic tables, which are expensive, doesn't always stop people from deciding they'd like to just barrel right over it. And I know that a few years ago, I got really interested in traffic calming. There's lots of resolutions. All of them cost a lot of money. There's none of them that are free. So I really appreciate you explaining how carefully you look at each situation, talk to the neighbors, try to understand the pros and cons. And I particularly like the idea about the information, which I think is new to me and to other people perhaps, about it not, you can't put something like speed tables on collector's streets. That was really very helpful. So thank you so much for your report. I appreciate it.
Any other? Counselor Ray, you had a hand raised?
Yes, sir. I got a comment from Mr. Portillo, Chief Portillo. I had a meeting here with Mr. Brown and Peter Penya here. And it's in the process to see if we may be able to, to see if we may be able to expand a little bit of Cooper Street, east and west, mostly east, from Chihuahua Street, from Chihuahua Street to up to the Capia. A lot of people walk there every day. In the summertime, there's always a lot of people at nighttime. A lot of bike people go through there, the pedal bikers. My question to you, or my comment to you is that if this were to happen, would there possibly be some sort of signage there saying that slow, slow down because people are walking or jogging or bicycle people going towards the cemetery and coming back down towards the mountain, a little hill over right there? People have a tendency to go real, real fast to there. And I know there's some speed bumps down there about a block away from there. That's just something to keep in mind if Brown and Mr. Portillo do decide to see if we can put some, they can put some sort of accessibility there for the people.
Yeah, what we're looking at out there is there's enough right-of-way in part of the road that where we might be able to look at a sort of a walking path that's separate from the road. And I believe that's what you're talking about. That's what we talked about down there. And we could, and there's no issues with the signage. We're just looking at to see if we have enough room to put a walking path, just to separate the pedestrian traffic there.
Okay.
Counselor Bettison?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask the chief that maybe next time we could talk about stop signs because most people feel that if they put a, if they request a stop sign at an intersection, you know, that people are going to stop. And I know that that's, you know, from my experience of living on a corner that has a stop sign that people don't stop at, and driving through town and seeing people not stopping at stop signs, rolling through them, rolling through red lights, driving through red lights. I mean, I'm not sure that that is necessarily the solution, but I think that the process that you'd go through, Chief, to make that determination whether a stop sign would work at an intersection is similar to what you've just discussed for speed bumps and speed tables, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
So all of that would apply for a stop sign as well, then?
Correct. I would use the same measures, same, gather as much data as I can, and then use discretion if, but stop sign will be effective at that intersection.
All right. So if citizens would like to do something like that, they really need to contact Silver City PD and contact you.
Yeah, observations, again, documentation on what they're observing really helps on that particular area. We'll look at it. Again, we can monitor it, put a traffic counter, and make the best decision, use our discretion if it's going to be feasible to place one there.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, one more thing. One more thing, sorry about that. Of course, if there's, if we're having a lot of accidents in a particular area, of course, that's also a contributing factor in deciding traffic signs or any type of speed humps or speed tables.
Thank you, Chief. Any other reports, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
So next on the agenda is new business. Under new business, item 11A, is the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2021-02. a resolution adopting the town's fair housing policy, citizen participation plan, HUD Section 3 Plan, residential anti-displacement and relocation plan and certification, and CDBG procurement policy for the town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, these are all the, the plans that we are required to have in place, adopted annually, that they're required by the federal government in order to qualify, to even qualify to submit a grant proposal to federal, for federal funding, specifically for CDBG programming, programs, HUD, housing programs. So, for instance, like all the CDBG projects that we, we work on every year, whether it be infrastr, I mean, water infrastructure, street infrastructure, it also would help us for, for housing programs such as the affordable housing subdivision that we, workforce subdivision that we have at Vista de Plata, as well as the affordable senior housing that we just, that was just built up at the intersection of Pope and Silver Heights. So, as you can see, we can't make any changes, they're just fill in the blanks. These are, they used to allow us to make some changes depending on what your needs were locally, but they just have templates now where you fill in the blank, and that's it. So.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Beddison?
I move to approve of Resolution Number 2021-02, a resolution adopting the town's fair housing policy, citizen participation plan, HUD Section 3 Plan, residential anti-displacement and relocation plan and certification, and CDBG procurement policy for the town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Ray?
Councilor Ray, I'll second it.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey?
Councilor Beddison?
Councilor Beddison, aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Councilwoman Smith, aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Canno?
Councilor Canno, aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is new business 11B, the approval slash disapproval of bid number 20/21-4, rebid Swan Street and 12th Street Road Diet and Bicycle Lane Improvements. Mr. Brown?
Now, Mayor and Council, I believe this is the third time that we've put this project out to bid, and finally, we are going to try to award it here. So, it's staff's recommend, staff's recommendation to award bid 20/21-4 rebids Swan Street and Toad Street, Street Road Diet and Bicycle Lane Improvements. You know, this is that federal, federally funded grant, where if we haven't been able to construct the entire scope of the project, we have 10 years to, to complete it. And so, the scope of this project is on Swan Street from Silver Heights to 12th Street, 12th Street from Swan Street down to Pope, 12th Street on, between Pope and, yeah, Pope, from Pope all the way up to Kentucky. So, the only portion that we're not going to be able to do under this project is 12th Street from Pope to Kentucky. And so, we will include that, because basically, this is a chip seal project with restriping along the, the project to include bike lanes. And so, not this year, but next year, we have it scheduled to finish the remainder of the project under our current chip sealing project, next, not, not this year, but next, next fall. And so, as you see in the, in the report, we are going to have to put, put in additional funding. I believe we have $243,000 left in the grant, and so, we're going to have to come up with about $29,000, $30,000 to complete this project. And I have identified the funding. Gross receipts have been doing much better this year than, well, been doing very well. And so, that has allowed us to, to be able to contribute to, to this project to, to get this much of it constructed.
Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say that I believe that this project is partially in my district and partially in Councilor Canno's district. And this was one of the highest priority projects that was recommended by the Bicycle Master Plan, lo these many years ago. And part of the thing that it will do is it will give kind of a loop off of that scary intersection at the corner of 180 and Juniper eventually. So, bicyclists will be able to move off into a, a well-smoothed-out loop and come back up and join on 180 near 12th Street there. So, I'm, I'm delighted to see this, hopefully, finally coming to fruition. So, thank you, Mr. Brown, for staying on it all these years.
No, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would love to make a motion.
Thank you.
And I move to approve of bid number 20-21-4, rebid Swan Street and 12th Street Road Diet and Bicycle Lane Improvements per staff recommendations to Southwest Concrete and Paving. Do I need to leave the amounts, or should I just say moving to approve? What do you think?
Just staff's recommendation.
Okay, per staff's recommendation to award that bid to Southwest Concrete and Paving.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Canno?
I'll second that motion as stated.
Thank you. Any, any discussion or further comments? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey?
Councilor Beddison?
Councilor Beddison, aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Councilwoman Smith, aye.
Councilor Ray? Councilor Ray?
Councilor Ray, you're muted.
I'll start all over again. Seguro que sí, and yes, I'll vote yes on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Canno?
Councilor Canno, aye.
Motion carries unanimously. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mayor?
Councilor Ray?
I move to adjourn until the next time we meet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilwoman Smith, I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey?
Councilor Beddison?
Councilor Beddison, aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Councilwoman Smith, aye.
Councilor Ray?
Councilor Ray, aye.
Councilor Canno?
Councilor Canno, aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We are hereby adjourned.